I call order the City of Columbiana City Council meeting on this July sixteenth, twenty twenty four. We're gonna have the invocation by Dan Davis and then we'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community. Help us to do right, to deal fairly with all of our citizens, and give us the faith and courage to put our trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yannick, you can call the roll.
Youngus?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
D'Attilio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Guy that comes in at the latest gets called for the roll first. Okay, you've received a copy in the packet of the June eighteenth, twenty twenty four, city council minutes. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, we will accept them as submitted. I want to remind everyone that at seven fifteen, we will conduct a public hearing on our twenty twenty five tax budget. And so we'll interrupt whatever business we're doing at that time to hold the public hearing. I have no readings of communications. And we do have, under reports of commissions and board, we have a planning commission meeting minutes of July ninth, two thousand twenty four. Any questions on those minutes? Hearing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. I have no one that has submitted any requests to, desiring to appear tonight in front of us. So we'll move past that agenda item. And we will now move to the manager's report and we'll ask Lance to give his city manager update.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, we're gonna start out on a somber note. We've, we lost Larry Baughman. Community fixture and spent so many years committed to the city and the park board, so we're gonna, we're gonna miss him. And he is gonna open up a seat in city council appointment. So I'm recommending that we, we ask for letters of interest until August fifteenth, close, end of business. That'll give us six, the August sixteenth to put that on the, in the manager or in the packets and then give council time to review the letters. And at the August twentieth meeting, you can interdiscuss and take a vote if we receive more than one. Moving on, the state auditor has been a recommendation to our recent audits and Kevin been doing a great job methodically going and addressing those issues. The auditors are especially interested in us passing a capital asset policy, which we've been talking about for probably the last six, seven months. And we do have that as an emergency on the agenda tonight. They are, the auditors are interested in us getting that passed. And I think it may even impact twenty twenty three audit if we do that. But we're looking forward to that and we want to thank Kevin and Mark for, for working on those. Also, we have a first reading of collectibility of debt policy. Something else that we have needed to polish up and debt collection service. And that is a first reading also. And these items, by getting these done will no, no doubt improve the twenty twenty four audit. So for those of you that have, who have sat through those, some of those items have been sitting there pretty long and Kevin's just worked really hard to get those, get those addressed. Some of them are, you know, pretty complicated, but thanks, Kevin, for doing that. You're doing a fantastic job. We have a public hearing scheduled for seven fifteen, just as a reminder. As you know, may know the, or realize that the new style utility bills did go out this month. It was the first mailing for us to do that, so they did go out a little late. So we just went ahead and extended without penalty to July fifth, July twenty fifth. So the new deadline, it's typically the fifteenth, but we've extended it ten days. Believe they, some of them were delivered, you know, maybe three or four days late, so we wanted to give them, give people time to, you know, adjust to that. Next month should go out on time, we, we hope. Last month, the OEMA came and did a review of the West Salem Stormwater Project. And we did a closeout meeting on that project. And since then, we're very happy to report that we did get reimbursed for much of the cost overrun on that project. And it's essentially an extension of the original grant, more than nine hundred thousand dollars. So that was budgeted this, this year. We did kind of, we were anticipating it, so it, we won't have to make any adjustments to the, the budget. But we really appreciate all the help that OEMA and FEMA has given us and, you know, really addressing our infrastructure for, for stormwater for years to come, so. See, when, when Bryce was out at that Main Street Now conference, he ran into a AI marketing company. We met with him a couple times. We actually met with the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Marketing Committee. And also a few of the Progress Committee to hear about the exciting opportunities and scary opportunities that are out there for the AI marketing. But it's, it's pretty impressive. It, it really shows what, you know, what's happening in, in a certain area or a certain business, where the customers are coming from and where they're going to afterwards and how many are there, so. Pretty, pretty cool. We're gonna see if we can team up and maybe do some of that data mining and over the next year, we're just not sure. We were excited to find out that Efficiency Smart has scheduled a recycling event for August twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, and it's gonna take place at nine AM to noon at the Mets Road Ball Field area, the same area that we do the drop off during town cleanup. The flyer is attached to your email packet. It's been posted on the city website. They're actually offering rebates if you, if you follow the directions, there's, there's pretty simple pickup and drop off process and you'll get seventy five dollars per unit recycled. So that was a pretty, basically, they're trying to get rid of old energy hog pieces of equipment in people's houses and you know, giving a benefit for people to do that. Moving to the utilities. The electric department, they're working on finishing up Drug Mart's service. They did hook up the service in the chapel in the park, let's fix the sticks building. And they did do two service disconnections for demolitions. We had a couple houses that were demolished since our last meeting. Park and Cemetery, they prepped and cleaned up for Fourth of July. It's a pretty successful event. Did lawn care and burials. Water Department, they did complete lead service line grant application, another one. If you remember, we got, did get a fifty thousand dollar grant about eighteen months ago from the EPA. And we've been working on that and we just applied for another round. They did disconnect the curb box for demolition and moved curb box on Duquesne Street, so preparing for that demolition. Multiple locates and repaired water main break. Did end up requesting the reimbursement for ten thousand dollars from the EPA from that awarded grant that we got for equipment. We did get a hydrant buddy, which I believe that helps you open the, open and close the hydrant. And we also got our own leak detection system. So we're better equipped out there for our distribution system for the drinking water. Street Department, we prepped and paved Pittsburgh Street with twenty, twenty tons of patch, if you will. Blacktop, prepped and paved and patched in the park. Looks really nice out there along, you know, all along the practice field. It looks really nice and it's made a little safer until we get going with that grant from ODOT to permanently fix it. See wastewater, we did press and waste ludge, working on repairs in the vector. The, the department is going to fix the tank themselves. Pretty talented welders down there, I guess, and they're going to do that themselves. And I believe that is it, other than, the chief's probably looking at me right now, don't forget. At the next meeting, we have a, we're probably gonna be passing a merger, gonna be asked to pass emergency legislation for the School Resource Officer. We did start that process. We've sent it over to the school. School starts at the end of August and it's gonna be the twentieth, the next time we see you. And we do not have that all figured out yet, so hopefully at the twentieth we do and we can pass emergency legislation. And with that, I believe that is everything I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Lance? In your packet, you received a copy of a mayor's court report for June twenty twenty four. And you also received the bid result for tree trimming and tree removal and stump grinding. Neither one of those subject to any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll have them considered as accepted. And we all, you also received a copy of the bill list for July second, twenty twenty four and July sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Are there any questions or comments on the bill list? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move to old business. What we have? I would entertain a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Second.
Motion second. Yannick, you call the roll?
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty four dash R dash six five zero, second reading. A resolution to exclude the approval of the City of Salem, which approval would otherwise be required for an alternate method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in twenty twenty five. So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on that motion? Yannick, you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
At seven fifteen, so at this time, we are gonna conduct a public hearing on the twenty twenty five tax budget. Don't know if there's any preliminary comments anybody wants to make at this point regarding it. If not, I would ask if anyone wishes to comment on the twenty twenty five tax budget.
I was just curious, Kevin, what do you need us to know? Yeah, I saw that one. So are we gonna need to talk, be talking about a new levy at some point? Or updating? We're gonna have to definitely look at it, so.
That's an issue everybody has. Good question. Any, any other questions or comments? Hearing no other comments, I will adjourn the public hearing. I will go back to old business. Resolution number twenty four dash R dash six five one, second reading. A resolution approving a new alternative method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in twenty twenty five. So move.
Second.
Motion second. Questions? Yannick, you call the roll?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two five oh, second reading. An ordinance amending and superseding ordinance number ninety six dash O dash one five nine oh, zero regarding the deposit of an investment of public funds and adopting updated investment policies to be followed by the City of Columbiana in the deposit of and investment of public funds. So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments on the motion? Yannick, you call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Moving to new business. I would like to entertain a motion to read the following ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Yannick, you call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two five one, emergency. An emergency ordinance approving and adopting the capital assets policies and procedures for the City of Columbiana, Ohio. So move.
Second.
Motion second. Comments? Yannick, you call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to read the following resolution as an emergency. So move.
Second.
Motion second. Yannick, you call the roll?
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty four dash R dash six five two, emergency. An emergency resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing tax levy in excess of the ten mil limitation pursuant to a high revised code five seven oh five point one nine. So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Yannick, you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner? Youngus?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty four dash R dash six five three, first reading. A resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Yannick, you call the roll?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty four dash R dash six five four, first reading. A resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Yannick, you call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two five two, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager with the assistance of the Director of Finance to engage in competitive bidding for the provision of debt collection services for the City of Columbiana. Or in the altern, alternative to entering the contracts as selected by the city manager with the assistance of the Director of Finance for the provision of debt collection services for the City of Columbiana when the total amount to be collected pursuant to such contract will not exceed the amounts as set forth in Ohio Revised Code nine point one seven. So move.
Second.
So I did, I did, I see, I did have a question on this. And so this is, periodically we'll be awarding contracts for debt collection. Is that what?
Yes.
Okay. I think the only thing I would ask is just to be, because I don't think you guys need to, need them to be approved, right, by us. I would just ask to be advised when we're awarding them. Part of the manager's report or something. I was thinking for the smaller ones, just if you're awarding, just advise us.
That, that's why there's an ether award to this resolution for the amount.
Just to let you know, this year, it's seventy five thousand dollars and then it will be increasing every year after this. So anything below that, we don't have to have competitive bidding, but since you don't necessarily know sometimes what's going to be collected, we have to err on the side of caution. So that's why it's written the way it is.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
Any other questions on the motion? Yannick, you call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two five three, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mike's Tree and Landscape LLC, eight hundred West Baton Street, Alliance, Ohio, four four six oh one, for the furnishing of tree purring for the City of Columbiana. So move.
Second.
Motion second. Yannick, you call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two five four, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mike's Tree and Landscape LLC, eight hundred West Baton Street, Alliance, Ohio, four four six zero one for the furnishing of tree removal and stump grinding for the City of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Comments? Yannick, you call the roll?
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two five five, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager with the assistance of the Director of Finance to adopt a policy and procedure to determine the collectability of debt owed to the various departments of the city and to write off those determined to be uncollectible. So move.
Second.
Motion second. Did you get these policies and procedures from somewhere else or on? Thank you. Any other questions? Yannick, you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
As is, as is our normal operating procedure. In the event that we are conducting executive sessions, we normally adjust the agenda so we can take the public comments and letting you know that there'll be no actions after the, the executive sessions. So that gives you, provides you the opportunity of leaving. So under that situation, at this point, I'm asking if we have any public comments. Anybody want to say anything? This is your time to speak. Okay? It's summer. And at this time, I'll ask if there are council comments. Council comments. I want everybody to know, we have a new representative from the Morning Journal. Here's Stephanie Uehaly. And Stephanie's right there. She is gonna be covering, covering our business for the newspaper. And so we thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. And hope it'll work out well for both of us. Very good. Is there any other comments up here? Boy, it really is summer. So I would now entertain a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of personnel, section one twenty one point twenty two G one and executive session, discussion of purchase of property, section one twenty one point twenty two G two.
So move. Second.
Motion second. Yannick, you call the roll?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I have a motion to come out of executive sessions.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, we call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner? Youngus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.